The Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order just past 6:30 on Monday, the 25th, regular school board meeting here in Benson. First looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move, second.
Any changes or additions to the agenda? All right, hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from September 11th.
So move, second.
Any questions, corrections, discussion on those minutes? All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment, we'll start with our in-person audience, is there anyone here tonight who has a public comment?
Not yet.
Yes, no?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment, okay. Anyone online with a public comment? All right, moving on to correspondence, Brooke, anything on your end?
Nothing I have.
And I guess I'll just point out that the only correspondence I received, there was an email sent to all board members from a gentleman named, I don't have it anywhere. Anyways, he was speaking about just fostering a discussion from seclusion tactics, it looked like he was from the Harwood District, I'm not sure if he's a board member or just community member, but I know we all received that message.
Ryan Dalla Mura.
So that was it for correspondence, Policy Committee?
Yes.
Tony?
The Policy Committee met, we discussed four policies, we have two that we would like to warn to adopt. The first one, we already have a 21, public participation at board meetings, however, we have some statements of clarification that we would like to add to the public participation at board meetings. Do you want me to read them, or have them sent?
This is an action item to warn them?
To warn.
To adopt at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Sure, if you can give us a quick summary?
Okay. One of the things was under implementation, and we have statements regarding confidential information and matters appropriate to executive sessions are not appropriate for public discussion. These matters include, but may not be limited to, personnel matters, confidential student matters, discussion of strategy and negotiations for pending claims and litigation, discussion of security, discussion of real estate acquisitions prior to purchase, and discussion of matters that might otherwise result in the disclosure of confidential records or the information contained therein. The Board shall make reasonable efforts to see that statements on these issues are not made in public, and reserves the right to take reasonable steps should a speaker violate this provision. And, we also want to add, towards the end, it says comments may be limited to two minutes in length, that's already in there. Number two, may not be redundant in nature, that's already in there. Number three, no uncivil language, and we want to add, will be tolerated. And number four is new, in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, public comment is a time for the Board to listen and learn from the community, although it is not a time for the Board to respond and engage in conversation. It will potentially inform future agenda items and/or action by the Board. So, we would like to add those two. So I would like to make a motion to warn, to adopt, A21, public participation at board meetings.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for Tony?
Is it your committee's intention that board members be able to publicly comment?
This is for public participation at board meetings.
Right, but we, like, last minute, last meeting, we had a board member give a public comment. Is that, is that something you think should be allowed, or?
I understand your question.
Yeah.
So, I guess, hurt's concern is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, should board members be allowed to make a statement during public comment if the intent, as Tony describes it, is a forum for us to listen to the public? Is that correct?
Yes. Should we have the Policy Committee?
In that, in that policy, the persons who may address the Board are any district resident, school staff members, students and parents, individuals who have been requested by the superintendent or the Board to present on a given subject, persons who are directly affected by matters on the Board agenda, and others at the discretion of the Board.
Well, she was not of the district, so, you know.
So maybe others at the discretion of the Board would cover that school board member?
Yeah.
Are there other questions? On warning this policy, the updated policy, 21, A21? All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of warning for adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, what else you got?
We also have another, one that we would like to warn to adopt, and this one is A24, Board Superintendent Relationship. And there are a couple of things we'd like to add to the current policy. One of them is, Board members have no authority over school affairs as individuals. They have authority only when acting as a body duly called in session. And another sentence we're adding is, only decisions of the Board acting as a body are binding on the superintendent. And, the Board will never give instructions to persons who report directly or indirectly to the superintendent. And we have one paragraph at the end, the superintendent shall at all times have a member of their administrative team who is properly licensed, designated to take over superintendent duties, should the superintendent become unavailable to perform their duties, and ensure the Board is aware of who such a designee is. And we had adopted this policy without those new things in 2017, so we just reviewed it and added those. So I would like to make a motion to warn, to adopt, A24, Board Superintendent Relationship.
Second.
Questions or discussion for Tony on this?
So, you said the superintendent has to have somebody in place?
They have to have a designee.
So the?
Who's licensed.
Yeah, so Casey and Chris Benway are both, are both licensed as superintendents.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is my question.
Oh, sorry. I think what I've been able to understand is the lady over here.
Oh, I just asked if the superintendent had somebody to take over in case she couldn't.
Correct. See who sticks in here.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, the Director of Curriculum and Director of Special Services, both are licensed as a superintendent, so.
Any other questions for Tony?
Just a matter of interpretation, does that leave open the possibility of a board member directly, through email or whatever, asking a question of the superintendent?
I think, I think it's more that you can't do things as an individual that should be done as a Board. In other words, we're a school board member, we're part of a group, we can't go out and act on, or on things that we've not been directed to by the whole body.
If I could ask, Tony?
Sure.
Is this added language, was it suggested by the VSBA, attorneys, just our administration? Who suggested these, who suggested the items and the wording that went along with it?
Based on other policies and our administration, other policies that the group had read.
Tim, at the last meeting, was it Janice brought a policies that we were looking at from multiple districts within the state, and compared to ours? So we pulled language out of other districts that would, that was not originally in ours.
Okay.
So as a Policy Committee last meeting, we agreed that some of those statements should be put in ours.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving to warn, A24, for next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Tony, anything else?
We have two policies we'd like to warn to rescind, one is A33, school visits by board members, because we have a school visit policy for anyone, and we should be following that school visit policy. So we really don't need a separate one for board members.
Okay.
So I'd like to warn, to rescind, A33.
Second.
Discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And the other one we would like to warn, to rescind, is Board Relations with School Personnel.
Okay.
Because our relations should be with our superintendent, not with, as board members, with school personnel. So we'd like to, I'd like to warn, to rescind, A34.
Second. Is there a question?
Sure, when, after you get, you got it.
So you warned it, you seconded, so yeah, sure, go ahead with your question.
When you say relationships, what does that mean?
They're talking about inviting school personnel to board meetings, and relations with the principal. In other words, we shouldn't, as board members, be going and talking to principals without first talking with our superintendent and discussing.
So you're saying that, as a board member, somebody can't go visit, go say hi to the principal, or say hi to teachers, or something?
Yes.
Well, I think formally, yes, but you're not directing a principal. In other words, we're not gonna?
I'll give you an idea about me, I go into the school, just say hi to the principal, and I say hi to some of the teachers, I just go down, I say hi, ask him how they are, as friends. And, you know, I don't have any kids in school up there yet, obviously, anymore, I mean, but I just, I go in just to say hi, just, you know, so that they know, that's what I'm getting at.
I think, I think this specifically relates to matters of school business.
Okay, we don't talk about school business, I don't talk about school business to teachers or anybody like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Rebecca?
What if you're talking to a principal as a parent about a school issue?
That's, that's.
If you're, as a parent, you have your parent face on it, it has nothing to do with the Board, it's, it doesn't pertain to that at all, even though it's talking about something potentially pertaining to the school, you're not?
But you're not directing a principal.
No.
So Tony, Tara, again, were these, was this language compared to other policies in other districts for consistency and?
Yes.
Reasonableness?
No, this one is to rescind.
Yeah, these are rescinding this.
This is the language.
So other school districts don't have policies?
Correct, correct.
Correct.
Correct. This, these were leftovers from our suit, and when we merged, and now that we're going through our policies, we're finding, we don't necessarily need all these policies, it's covered in other areas, what we want to have covered.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing nothing further, all those in favor of warning this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Warning, rescind.
Warning to rescind. Any opposition to that one?
Aye.
And, that's it?
That's it.
That was a busy meeting, huh?
Yes.
Very busy, the last one, month ago.
Thank you, Tony. All right, Buildings and Grounds, also Matt, Peter, Chairman, this is an update.
So, we talked about the stormwater plan, which is Act 64, so if you have three acres of more per muriel surfaces, you have to come up with a plan for stormwater. Phase one is done, which is permitting, so we're going into phase two. At this point, the State's been paying for all of it. When we get into phase two, where hopefully, State should be paying 90% of the construction. So that's just for taking care of stormwater. And then we talked about the budget, and trying to decide how much money we should be putting in for building repairs, building maintenance, and it turned in, we talked about a bond briefly, so we're gonna keep talking about both those things, and talking about maybe, in the future, talking about a bond. And then PCBs, we're not being tested right now, we don't know when we're gonna be, we're under litigation for it, so that's basically where it's at. And I think that was it.
Is there any questions for Peter? Yes, Glenn.
Peter, what schools, are we having to do things that are over the three acre threshold?
Castleton and High School.
And what's being done for remediation?
For, what do you mean?
To fix the problems that are there, I mean, are we just, are we putting in, like, catch basins?
Well, yeah, more or less, we don't really know yet, we just had some preliminary stuff. So it would be, the planning phase and the actual plans will come next, and it will be, something like that, catch basins, or, you know, a retention pond, we're not exactly sure where that, that part is at yet, because they haven't gotten actually that far.
The State is leading the process?
Yeah.
In terms of permitting?
Yeah.
In terms of engineering?
Wow.
There's talk of a 90% reimbursement on the cost of the project, so they're kind of beating us through things.
But, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm used to, on the agricultural side, like, all of the rainwater has to be captured off the roofs, and goes to a separate, like, lagoon. And some of these can be pretty good sized, depending upon the roof size, I mean, if we're talking about having to put in a one acre pond, somewhere.
Yeah, no, I don't think anything's that big, it's, it's, it's pretty much, it's gonna be like a filtration pond, or a pond to catch ex-oph water running off the parking lots and stuff, we aren't gonna, we aren't gonna be?
Sediments and whatnot, it might not even be a pond.
And Glenn, if you're interested, I do have preliminary plans that I can share with you, that there is a pond at the high school, middle school, and then more water diversion over at the Castleton Elementary School, but we have preliminary plans on them.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
If you, anybody wants a copy of them, feel free, I can share very much.
I want to be clear, though, do you have a lagoon?
No.
No?
I don't have three, three acres of roof, or impermeable surface, but I work with a lot of people, and I know the expense, you know, they've had to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars into these basins and stuff before they could do anything.
I have one, Tim, it makes you feel better.
What is the difference between a pond and a lagoon? I want to look into that, because I don't want to reclassify my pond.
Lagoon holds manure usually, like cow manure.
A, a, a lagoon does?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm thinking like tropical paradise.
That probably holds manure as well.
Lagoon, I guess.
This is the brown.
Okay, never mind, I don't, I don't need a lagoon, I'll stick with the pond.
Classes be part of it as well.
That's a great, that's a great thing, if we can work kids into these things.
All right, well, thanks for that update, Peter.
Yep.
Contracts and resignations?
Yep.
There's a few revised, the list that came out.
Excuse me, can I say one more thing?
Sure, on the Buildings and Grounds?
Yeah, on the Buildings and Grounds. Chris just brought out a point about our middle school project that we tried to do in 2020, the fact that it was gonna be $60 million, but it, it wasn't $60 million, because almost a million was going to the grade school, $6 million was going to Orwell, over $6 million. And then, $52 million was the high school, but that was more than just a middle school, that was a whole workover on the whole, the whole building, all mechanics and everything, it was a new face, and it was a, quite a big building. So I just want to make sure the public realize that it wasn't a $60 million middle school, it was a lot of projects throughout the whole district, that's all.
Thank you for clarifying that, Peter.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, contracts and resignations?
Yeah, we have a, a contract for 2324, this current year, super exciting, that Christine Harris, Spanish teacher, for the Fairhaven Union Middle High School, $51,751, prorated to $45,073.26.
Second.
Questions on the new teacher contract, Spanish teacher?
Is that the one from the Philippines?
No. No, we still have not.
It's a music teacher.
Yeah, that's a music teacher, right, and we're still looking for housing for him.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the contract, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
And then there's a resignation for this year as well, Antoinette McCormick, nurse at Benson Village School.
Second.
Do you know why she's leaving?
Didn't she just start?
For personal reasons.
Does she have a plan for filling that?
Uh, right now, we're using substitutes or other nurses throughout the district to share the role, we're advertising, so.
How many days a week is it?
Five, full time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right, any other questions on the resignation? Hearing nothing further, all those in favor of accepting the resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Benson Principal Report, I know there was a memo in our packet, just speaking to some of the goings on here in Benson. Amy, was there anything further you wanted to add?
No, permanent.
Okay.
Hi. So, I mean, I, I think some of the exciting news for Benson, Benson is they were removed from being identified as a school in need of support, so they are off that list for the State, so that's exciting, and a big thank you to the staff, and Amy, as well as other instructional coaches, and Casey, really on the level, the amount of work that they've done to make sure that that's, that's happened. Amy, we're doing your principal report.
Wonderful.
So, so congratulations to them for their part.
Do you want to finish, Amy? Anything else you wanted to point out in your report?
Justin, it's been a great start to the year, we have a lot of new staff, and everybody's really coming together, and I mean, you wouldn't know it to walk in, even now, that we have three new teachers, and some other new staff, it's just been going really, really well this year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Amy? Okay, thank you. Thanks for hosting tonight, and the treats.
Woo!
Number 10 is the People Bench Survey.
All right, Walter, can you pop it up?
Need a really enthusiastic presentation here, okay, Brooke?
Okay. So, if you recall, part of our strategic plan in our district, and part of the goals you set for me, were around staff retention, recruitment, all of those things. As part of that, we, last year, we needed to develop some baseline data around culture, and how staff were feeling throughout the district. We've come off some really difficult years in terms of school security and COVID, and so really looking at what that baseline is. So, this is a company we engaged with, People Bench, they're actually out of Australia, but they do a lot of work in the United States. So you might notice some words might be slightly, you know, while they're Australian versus, the Australian interpretation versus the American, so you, you might notice some of that. So we gave this survey back in June, so right at the end of the school year, probably not the optimal time to give a staff culture survey, however, we did, because we wanted that baseline data. And really, what this measures is, it measures resilience, the staff resilience, to be able to withstand and overcome adversity, and difficult events, and how, how do we adapt to change and uncertainty. So, we administered that survey June 5th through the 16th. 168 staff members took that across the district, so it was a pretty good representation. They liked to make sure that 50% or more take the survey, and we had about 50% take, take the survey. We gave this to coaches, substitutes, I mean, everybody across the board, so had the opportunity to take that. And I think I sent this out ahead of time, so you should have had time to probably look it over, because some of the writing is super small. Walt, you can skip to the next slide. So they really look at seven key areas when they're measuring resilience at work, and so we'll go into each of these, each of these areas. But first, I'll start with our overall score, go ahead and, yep. Overall score was 71, the average benchmark is 72, so, across the country, so we were one point below the, the benchmark, in terms of staff resilience. And this is a whole district, we also have individual buildings that principals are working with their staff on individually. So, overall scores, and there's future slides that'll break down these a little, a little more, so, like, we did really well, we're either at or above the benchmark in some areas, and then there's other areas that we definitely need to work on, one being staying healthy, building networks, maintaining perspective, those are three of the areas that we do need to work on. So, living authentically is the first one, this component measures how well we believe we know and hold on to our personal values, use our personal strengths in our work, understand and regulate our emotions at work. So again, these are, you know, the employee is taking this, this survey themselves, and rating themselves on, on a scale. And so we're at the, at the benchmark here, and if you look further at our data, you will see, I believe that the numbers are higher at the elementary level than they are at the high school level, for educators, which you would, you would probably expect. That's especially true with the next one, finding your calling. So sense of purpose in our work, sense of belonging in our workplace, connection or alignment between our own values and the school's values, so this is an area that we, we were strong, or at the, at the benchmark in. Building networks, so identifying and investing in the most important relationships we need at work, and do we have personal support outside of the workplace? So some of this stuff, I mean, we can certainly control the, the work aspect, but the personal networks outside of work would be something, you know, that people might be struggling with, those might be things, though, that we as an employer may not be able to help in those areas, but certainly in the other area. So we're below the benchmark in this area, and I think you'll notice later on in the survey, I think we're lower in this area specifically with support staff, so our instructional assistants, custodians, admin assistants, tech integrationists, they're all of our support staff, or they've identified in this survey as support staff. Interacting cooperatively. Interacting cooperatively, how well we work with others and provide supports to each other, we're above the benchmark. This is probably our strongest area in the survey in terms of, so that collegiship that folks provide to one another. Mastering stress, slightly below the benchmark. Nationally, this is an area nationally that's, that's lower than, than the other areas. How do we manage our stress on a day-to-day basis? And I didn't give you every single slide in the survey because there's, there's a ton, but what you will notice too is it's, and it might be further on in this slide, but you will notice that it seems to be folks that are in the middle of their career that have the greatest difficulty with mastering stress. And one hypothesis might be they might have young children at home, you know, whereas the other ends of the spectrum don't necessarily have that. So, you know, you know, there's some, there's some different, there's some different conclusions we might be able to draw from some of this data, so the whole work-life balance. Maintaining perspective, so have the capacity to reframe setbacks, you know, manage the impacts of negativity on the workplace, focus on finding solutions versus then getting caught up in the problems. I know this is something that we are working hard on too as a leadership team. Everyone in the leadership team has a goal where they, where they need to actually go outside of the district, talk, talk with other professionals in other districts, whether at the state level or national level, kind of get out of Dodge, so to speak, and see, see what some other perspectives are out there, because sometimes we get so mired in the day-to-day, that it's good to have multiple perspectives. Staying healthy, so the physical fitness, healthy diet, quality sleep, all of those things, that's something that we're below average in. And we've noticed this in the district, we, this year, thanks to Kristin Whitman and her, her help, we wrote a grant with, with VHI, we have a yoga program that's fully funded for our staff. We also have meditation apps, those types of things that we were able to get grant monies for to help, help improve some of this. And then if you look further, like resilience by component group, so I think there, and I'm trying to read off the screen here, you've got your guidance counselors, the LEA and other support staff, your school staff, which is your support staff and, and your teachers. So, so that just gives you an overall picture. Again, maintaining perspective is the lowest in most of those or mastering stress. And universally, that's what we would see across the country, so not really anything out of the norm. Resilience component by detailed role type, so that breaks it down even, even further. And, you know, the staying healthy is a big, looks like it's a pretty significant issue for our special educators and our special area teachers, which, when you think about it, probably makes sense. They're probably in some of the more stressful positions in interacting with some of our most vulnerable students, so, so that definitely tracks. Resilience component by year level focus, so how many years have you been in education? And again, you see kind of that dip, that when you're in the nine to 12 years, you're seeing a dip in that resilience, and then you see it go up on either end of the spectrum there. Resilience component by years, experiencing K-12 education, so specifically, again, then you have the age component, I'm not going to go through every single one of these, and then gender, female versus male, and nationally, you see that as well. The same, similar results.
So who's more resilient? Men, women, what does it say?
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna, like, females are more spread out, right? Like, they're, so they're saying that maintaining perspective is a little lower in females, whereas males seem to be clustered more. So what are we going to do with this data? So this is data that we're discussing at our building levels, our principals are discussing this with their faculty, we're looking at it as a leadership team, so what are some components that we can put in place to help build staff culture and resiliency across the district? What I'm really interested in seeing, and we're going to give our second survey in October, I'm really interested to see what that survey shows, because we're at the beginning of the year versus the end of the year. You know, I wonder if there'll be any statistical difference. Now, again, we've had some staff turnover, so they're not exactly the same survey group that, the same group that we're surveying. So over time, what we want to do is we want to start to build programs that help with this throughout our district, so that, that's what we're doing. There's three surveys a year, so October, then we'll give one in January, February, and then in May, and after each one of those, there's a community of practice session where we meet as a leadership team and go through that data, analyze that data, talk about wellness activities, talk about it in relation to our strategic plan, and then the building leaders go back and use that data with their staff in their buildings, because every building is slightly different too. I'm just showing you the overall district data. So this is, this is where, where we started with, with this. The other thing is this program we'll bring in, and Walter's working on this, we're going to be able to track sick days too. Obviously during COVID, you know, the pandemic, we saw a large increase in the number of sick days. We're hoping over time that we're going to see people need to take less and less sick time if they're not feeling as stressed at, at work, so, I mean, so those are other components we're going to be looking at. So this is really just baseline data that we wanted to show you.
Well, thank you, Brooke.
Do you have a plan to get more, more participation?
Yeah, I mean, I actually thought 168 individuals wasn't terrible in terms of participation in June, but again, it was in June, you know, that's a terrible time of year to give a survey to anybody, so I'm hoping that we can get more participation in October and even possibly principals might be able to give some time at their faculty meetings or staff meetings for people to actually take the, take the survey. It's all anonymous.
Any other questions?
So we really have no way of knowing, I mean, in, I guess, some, some of the people who did not take it may have been people who were planning to leave. Anyways, I mean, we have no way of knowing, but I would hope that, that that's the larger part, and that the people who were planning on returning did partake in the survey.
Yep.
But there's no way of knowing.
Right, because we're not tracking the individual data.
Any other questions for Brooke?
I had a question about the staying healthy slide, and I'm just wondering if the intent of the response there was that staff are looking to make personal changes on their own, meaning that in their free time, they're hoping to eat better, get more exercise, et cetera, or was that question more geared to they feel that they're working in a health, an unhealthy and stressful environment, and it's the employer's responsibility to make it a more healthy workspace? Which one?
So, and certainly others who took the survey, you can weigh in, but when I took the survey, I thought about myself as an individual needing to be more healthy, but I also think there's, there's things you certainly could build into work that would encourage some, some of that as well. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a one or the other. I think it's, you know, working both at work and at home to making sure that that happens.
I like that the survey includes that, and includes things like, do you have a larger network of support? Because I feel like as these numbers go up, probably so will our retention rate, because they'll just feel like a more holistic, full person.
So, so one, one example that I, I can speak maybe a little bit to, and it's, it didn't come about directly as a result of this survey by any means, it was in the works before that, but if you noticed in here, our support staff, they were lower in, in some of the categories, and I want to give a shout out to Bonnie Lunnahan, who worked with some of our experienced IAs to put together an IA mentoring program, which we haven't had in the district before, and all I have heard from our instructional assistants is how much they, they value that and appreciate that, and I hope that that will lead to them feeling more supported in, in their positions, so kudos to Bonnie for, for doing that, but, but, yeah, so, so that's an example of things that we want to, want to look at, because before I think we might have taken our instructional assistants who work with some of our neediest children and don't offer them necessarily the same level of support that we might offer a, a new teacher, so that's something we really looked, looked at, and Bonnie and some of our veteran IAs decided to institute this program, so, so that's an example of something that we want to do.
Do you also have individual data for each school, or is it just overall?
No, we have individual data for, for the schools, the principals have that data and that stuff that they looked at with their staff during opening in service in August.
So we're pretty medium?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, off the top of my head, there were some distinct differences between secondary and elementary that you would expect, for example, finding your calling was definitely higher in the elementary level than it was in the secondary level, which you could definitely, I mean, you could definitely see that, but overall, like maintaining perspective, managing stress, those were lower, you know, across, across the board, so.
Hey Brooke, this is Christina, I have a question, is this, is this survey, because it's being done three times a year, is any goal setting being set up as part of the process? I mean, like, reflective time?
You mean for individuals, buildings, or district?
Uh, for individuals. And, and you know, I'm just thinking about like, things like, well, you know, if they're not getting good sleep, and it's evident in the survey, I mean, are they setting personal goals for, you know, the next time they take the survey to try to help themselves?
Yeah, we, we haven't specifically focused on that at a district level, principals may have done something with that individually, but we also, as part of our VHI path points too, there's also ways through our health insurance program that, you know, individuals might engage in some of these healthy, healthy activities to, to get certain points so that you can get, I believe, it's an L.L.B. gift certificate at the end of the year, right? Right, Cheryl?
$100.
As you can tell, I don't participate in it, so that might be a goal for me, so, so, because I have to ask about it, but, yes, so those are all, those are all things that we have, but we haven't directly directed any staff to say you must choose a goal, you know, in, in this area.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you for that presentation, Brooke. All right, number 11 is board reconfiguration, so I'll just be presenting some data here that I put together. This is an agenda item that I brought up a number of months ago about the idea of reconfiguring or reducing the enrollment of our board, and I know Patty's expressed some concerns recently about West Haven and how we currently have no representation from the town of West Haven. So I guess my intent here is to just present you with some data, some options, and this, this discussion can really go wherever the board chooses to, to take it. You know, I think we would first want to decide if it's something that we seriously want to consider, reducing the size of our school board and what the allocation would be. Next would be deciding upon an option. There are certain things that you can do, as our attorney has spelled out in one of the email attachments that I provided, proportional model, a hybrid model, or an at-large model. The third step would be to obviously agree to that as a board majority, and then put that out to the voters to approve this reconfiguration, because it would be a change or an amendment to our bylaws or our articles, right?
Articles, yeah.
So that's kind of the process, so if everyone just would look at this sheet right here, this spreadsheet, there are three columns. The top column is from the U.S. Census of 2020, it's the population in each of our towns, total population. The second column was data provided to me by Walter, which is enrollment population from each town within our schools, and then the third column would be recommended options. So the exercise here really is if we were to look at the U.S. Census data, if we were to try to allocate our school board based upon the, you know, the allocation percentage of residents from each town, you know, I take four, four years or four periods of data, average it, get that allocation percentage, and in the example of if we want to have an 18-member board based solely upon total population within our towns, you could see that Castleton would have eight members, Fairhaven five, Orwell two, Benson two, and so on and so forth. I've also done that with the hypotheticals of a 13, a 12, and an 11-person board. And again, the middle column is looking at student enrollment, and again, taking three data sets, an average, an allocation of total, and under the current structure of an 18-member board, Castleton and Fairhaven have, would have six members apiece, Orwell three, Benson two, Hubbardton one, and, and West Haven zero, and then again, the same hypothetical for an 18, 13, 12, and 11-member board. And you can see here in, in any scenario, whether it's the U.S. Census data or the student population data, West Haven never rises to the level of even having one member. And I will note too that these are rounded numbers, they rounded up or down accordingly. So then I just wanted to present those two first columns as kind of a reference point for deciding in our recommended, recommended options below on how it would sugar out in comparison if we changed our, our membership accordingly. So that was one attachment, and again, the second attachment was just a snippet from an email conversation that I had with our attorney, Sean, this past winter about what our options are, suggested next steps, you know, you know, who, who would vote on the membership, if it's just people within their town, voting on their town's representation, or if it's everyone from within the district voting on school board members, et cetera. So I'm here to take any questions or to facilitate the discussion, however.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
I would just point out that the old high school board was based on student enrollment.
Yes, and was it, and I could be wrong, was it like a 50, a 50-head count trigger point, where if you got, everyone got a member, and then when you got over 50, you got a second member, and then over 100, you got a third member, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, because I remember Castleton lost and gained within the time that I was on the board.
Okay.
So, yeah, we went under 50, and then we went over 50, so we lost and gained.
But that would be pretty.
But that would be pre-merger.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, that was pre-merger, correct.
Tim, I just want to say thank you very much for doing all this work. It's, it's very, very thorough and, and good work. You know, I didn't obviously mean to have you do those work necessarily, but.
Well, I missed, I missed a family reunion this weekend, a couple soccer games.
I'm sure you did, so I apologize for that. I apologize for that. But, but you know, I do think it's good to spark the conversation so that, you know, obviously, you know, with one town having no representation, I just think that it's something we should talk about every year regardless, because I'm not sure why we can't get at least one individual to, to represent West Haven. And hopefully, you know, maybe at least the dialogue will prompt somebody to think about it.
Glenn?
So, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a constitutional expert, but some of the discussions I remember around the formation of the Act 46 study groups and everything. One, I don't think any way you go, like especially if you're talking proportionality, West Haven has to have a member.
Yeah, it says that in the email.
Yeah, because it, because while in here, it's, it's got zeros. But, I mean, it's like, you know, Vermont, I don't believe even qualifies for one representative in the U.S. House, but everybody has to have one, so we get one. And I know that at least from the Northland, there was definitely a very, very vocal opposition to any type of proportionality.
What's the Northland?
Orwell.
You know, if you're talking about like the Northeast Kingdom or something like that?
No, because of the fear that.
Where the Lagoons are, the Northland, okay.
You gotta go further north from Westland there. Because of the fear, and I think probably an ill-gotten fear, but there was that fear that Castleton and Fairhaven would gang up on the smaller towns. I have never seen that at any board level, but there are voters out there that are very concerned over that. You know, there are protections that are in those Articles of Agreement, but we have people. So I think that, you know, in looking at your options here, certainly decreasing the number of board members would be workable, I think, as long as they all stayed the same. And I don't know, like with West Haven, I don't have an answer for West Haven. And I don't know if it's something that can even be done, because like I said, I'm not a lawyer. But, you know, maybe we need to ask West Haven, do you want representation? Or, or if it can be, and I don't know if it can be done, or do you voluntarily want to give up some of your seats? So that you can, because I think if a town decided to give up their, a seat on the board voluntarily, that's the town's decision. But if it's forced down their throat, there could be some opposition.
Well, I don't think it's the town's decision. It's.
Yeah, I think it's everyone in Slate Valley. I think everyone, all voters have to vote on it.
I think the exception to West Haven being guaranteed a spot would be if we did it all at large.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
And then, you know, Orwell could lose their spots as well. It'd be up for grabs.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Rebecca?
I just think that keeping it even, everybody gets equal say, equal transparency for their towns. I agree with maybe going down to 11, with West Haven having one open seat. But keeping it even, it just makes everybody in the district feel their voice can be heard evenly.
And I think also if we went with having six or eight members, Fairhaven or Castleton, we'd have a hard time getting those.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I, I don't think increasing any towns is going to make it so we have people filling those seats. I think decreasing, we might win in the long run, but I don't see it working, increasing towns, but keeping it even, I think.
Peter?
Well, I was just gonna say the same thing Rebecca said. That down at the bottom, either option two, you have 12, or option four, you have one, since West Haven, we can't get anybody from West Haven. I just, I agree for the representation of two people from each town, I think is, I think it's good. It gives you a perspective of our geographic area, because if you get a lot more from Fairhaven, Castleton, that's, you know, the geographics, the people are different throughout all our different towns. I think it's, personally, I think it's better that way. Simpler too.
So with Robert's Rules of Orders, we have a, no, no, I'm, I'm, I could Google it, but I'll ask if anybody knows. It's a choice whether the board chair votes or not, correct?
Like at all, or just in cases of tie?
Right, exactly. Is that like a choice?
I don't, I don't think I vote in this particular setting unless there's a tie.
Okay, so and that's mostly how it is? So does it matter if our board is an odd or even number?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I'm just saying, because if you, if it's 12 and a board chair doesn't vote, that takes a town down to, right? And if it's 11, it's just, I'm just saying quorum, and it's kind of like how it all works. I just think that needs to be a little bit of a thought process. That's all.
I think with Robert's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think with Robert's Rules of Order, the chair could vote to create a tie or break a tie. Thank.
You broke a tie once, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you had to apologize to me. Does it think go my way?
I think, I'll have to think about that in the right now.
Peter remembers. He's holding a grudge.
I don't remember, but I remember.
Okay, so we've had some discussion here about, you know, we, we haven't been able to fill the West Haven seat, or seats, probably since we consolidated.
Well, Angie was on for a bit.
We used to have, but we had a couple people.
But I don't know that we had all three.
No.
No.
We, we had all three.
But let's, let's not get hung up on West Haven here, because it was a couple years before Hubbardton had all its representation, as I recall.
And Benson, we struggled with for a little bit.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I understand what Glenn's saying, you know, about the North Country. But I would lean more towards the, the student population. And then, you know, making sure smaller communities have at least one representative.
The thing is, the student population could change every couple of years.
Well, it, it could. But, and, and here's one thing, you know, looking at this data, that kind of confuses me, because, you know, we're going 2021, 2020, 2021, and 2023, or 22. You know, during that period, we're, we're talking the beginning and the duration of COVID, my understanding where, you know, people were moving this way, like paying, you know, exorbitant prices for housing. It's hard for me to, to believe that the population really did not change in any of the towns, whereas the student population did.
Fair enough.
Hello?
Hi Christine.
Hi, I just have a, a comment. It's a lot of information to be digested, and I think that we should just take a, a time to really think about it and talk about it amongst ourselves, yes, at the board, but I don't think that we should make any moves tonight about it.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't, I don't expect that to happen. Do you have another opinion about a, a particular option or a methodology to figure out a?
I can see that the, the towns that have less student population or less taxpayers should have a little bit less representation. But I don't think that it should be, you know, a great amount. I think that it should be like two from a smaller town, like our town Hubbardton, if it went down one by one. But I think that the reason that they wanted all the equal say was because they were afraid, in the smaller towns, that there were going to be, their wants and needs weren't going to be heard, and that things would always be based on what the bigger towns would propose.
Thank you Christine. Anybody else? Glenn?
I think, and if we went back through the minutes from when the, the whole concept of Act 46 was first being developed, and I may be wrong, as I'm getting older, I tend to forget things. But I do remember a talk about basing everything on student population, and there was a legal reason why it could not be done, because when you went to a, a school district or a union versus a city, and I forgot the guy's name that was the lawyer for that study committee, but he was adamant that.
Chris Leopold?
What's that?
Chris Leopold, wasn't it?
Yes.
I wasn't hearing about it.
But there was, there was some reason why that representation could not be based on student numbers that had to be based upon voter numbers, if you were going to go with any kind of proportional thing. And he kind of simplified it, it's like, you want the, you want the, the House of Representatives model or the Senate model?
Well, I remember that conversation, but I, again, I think that would be option number one, where you do adhere strictly to a proportion by town. I think what a lot of us are talking about is the hybrid model, where we pick the number of delegates that we want per town in some sort of reasonable methodology. I guess I'll give my two cents. I, I, I like option one. 13 members, it reduces the total membership from 18 to 13. That's a decrease of five. West Haven still maintains a vote with number one. Castleton and Fairhaven are the only districts that have three, so there is some sort of resemblance of proportionality there. Benson, Orwell, and Hubbardton have two each. And then, of course, if you sum up the small towns, it equals seven, versus the two larger towns, six. So maybe to address your concerns about the, the big towns overriding the small towns. I just think 18 equals too many. 18 board members for a community in a school this size, I just think it's, it's too much. I mean, we have a relatively full board now, absent West Haven, but still, it wasn't too far ago, it's just six months ago where we really had a lot of vacancies. Karina and Janice are, are brand new to Hubbardton, and, you know, so there were some gaps in Hubbardton and Benson at times as well. So I would like to see the board shrink.
So Tim, we did, go ahead, go ahead Patty.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I wonder if we could, not that I want you to do this, because I don't want you to miss any more reunion time or anything, but I wonder if it'd be interesting to look historically at two factors. One would be, where were those vacancies? You know, like, I don't know, maybe it's 10 years, maybe it's 15 years, but where were the vacancies? And how many contested races we've had? And I don't know if that's a good word, but you know, how many races have there been? Or how many votes have there been where, where somebody, where an incumbent didn't just get the position because they were the incumbent?
Or they were appointed. Sometimes nobody ran, right?
That's what I'm trying to say, is that, you know, if I'm looking at something where, I don't know, I don't know what the time period would be, but 10, 15, 20 years, and really, there's been, you know, you kind of, Patty's always on the ballot, and you vote for Patty because she's on the ballot. And, you know, I think that that might be an interesting way of looking at it, because then supporting one of these models might, you know, other people could see that data and make a, a more informed decision.
I think that's easy enough to do for Slate Valley, but then going back to all the individual boards. I mean, when I first started seven years ago, we had 48 board seats. So that's going to take quite a bit of research and time. I don't, I don't know. Tracking down that information.
Yeah, I just wonder if town clerks had that pretty readily.
Maybe, a lot of them have turned, turned over. I mean.
That's true.
We can, we can try.
I don't know, in fact, I was just thinking.
Slate Valley would be easy, you know, to do that.
I don't remember the high school having much in the way of contested elections.
No.
There were appointments, a lot of appointments.
Yeah.
I don't think a lot of the, in the 13 years I've been here, I don't think a lot of the boards had a lot of.
Contested ones.
No.
And, you know, I, I don't want to speak for any, but I, I've heard rumblings that there may be people currently on this board who, who may not be, who might be retiring or not running again in March. So we could have a situation where we do again have vacancies upon reorganization in March. So I guess the takeaway from tonight's conversation is.
Well, Tim, I, I was gonna say something. Patty and I were talking at the same time. But we, when this first went around, like in Orwell, when we went around with setting up to consolidate and how we were going to run this, we did get feedback from Castleton that they did feel like, due to their population size, that they did feel like they would like one more. I don't think they want to have eight. I don't think anybody wants eight. But I'm just saying, you know, that, that, that was mentioned at town meeting days and stuff like that. I mean, nobody ever came bad at us afterwards, but it was mentioned.
So I guess my takeaway was really just to see if the board wanted to continue with these discussions, if there is a general feeling that we would like to continue to explore the idea of reducing our membership, or, and not really, let's move on to something else.
And if we do follow up on this, and we make changes, is, or we go into writing there that, you know, we revisit the population, say, every three years.
We could, for sure.
And it's, it would make it more palatable for everyone, I think.
Right, yeah.
And also too, I think about the timing as well.
Look at it.
I was wondering too, I mean, I personally would not want to have to, would everyone have to start from scratch and rerun again? I'd like to think that we wouldn't have to. So maybe you could have a, a change in the amendment that's voted on in March to take effect the following March, or something like that.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I had.
Like natural attrition. Your time's off, your time's off.
Something like that. I just don't want to have everyone go through the efforts of running and then have the amendment ultimately defeated, and then it was just a waste of time. Not that it takes too much time to get through your sort of signatures, but nonetheless. So I guess just a simple show of hands, how many people would like to continue this conversation? So that's, that's near everyone, so. Christina Ryan, a little bit higher. I couldn't see your hand. Higher, higher. I can't, I can't see. At least it's the hand and not the finger, right? All right, great. So I'll, I'll talk about this with Brooke, take the feedback tonight, maybe run a few more questions by the attorneys, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
All right, public comment, the second half. Anyone here in person who has a public comment?
Actually, we're looking at number 12.
Yes, I'm sorry Kurt, you're right. Curriculum and Personnel Committee consideration, yes.
Can I speak to that?
This is here for you, so it is your, you're talking.
I appreciate you putting this on the agenda.
No problem.
I really want to, for right now, focus on, on curriculum. There, there's some question as to whether that is or should be one of our roles. And Policy D20 says the district board shall be responsible for establishing a district-wide curriculum by either developing the curriculum or assisting member school districts to develop it jointly. And then below that, the superintendent shall be responsible for assisting the district and member school boards in the development, implementation, coordination, and evaluation of the curriculum. The statutory language is just about the same. And things haven't really changed since we've become a unified school district. Basically, what goes for supervisory unions and supervisory districts still, still holds for us. So I would say it is a responsibility. I know there's, we've just heard a concern that our school board is too big. We've only got three standing committees for 15, possibly 18 members. I, I'd like to see the school board members more engaged, and I think this is a way to do it, to have more committees and more, more responsibilities for individual school, school board members, or, or two or three school board members. for individual school, school board members or, or two or three school board members. Cheryl reports to the Finance Committee. I'm on the Finance Committee. I'm not an expert in finance. She is, and I understand that. Chris reports to Buildings and Grounds Committee. I think Casey should report to a curriculum committee. I, I think he is trustworthy of, of making curriculum decisions. I think Brooke is also, at some point, there might be somebody who wants to jam down some woke, woke curriculum. You know, I could see it happening. And, and we live in a pretty conservative school district. So my concern right now, though, is with gaps and redundancies in our curriculum and, and mapping that. And, you know, where are we, and we can do it easily, I think, with, with proficiencies. Where are we assessing proficiencies over and over and over? And what proficiencies are we not assessing? That's my current concern, and that would be one of the things I would bring up on, on the curriculum committee. Anyway, that's, that's kind of my spiel.
Brooke, I know you had a few talking points as well, just on what was done in the past or, or what the districts might do.
So in the past, the high school board used to have a curriculum committee pre, pre-merger. Since I started thirteen years ago, they were the only board that I was aware of that, that had one. Because I used to frequently go to those, those meetings. I know the focus at a lot of those, we had different departments present at those meetings. But as we adopted Act Seventy-Seven, the focus was more on setting the graduation requirements. And so that's something that we have worked with this board on, and that's Policy D-21 that we set. I think it's D-21 off the top of my, yes, no, D-one, D-one. That we set, that the board set the graduation requirements. And they also approved the strategic plan. And that's what we work under, and that's what Casey is charged with, with implementing. I did survey the other Rutland County districts just to get a sense of what they were doing. Rutland Northeast, Greater Rutland Supervisory Union, Rutland City, Mill River and Bennington Rutland all do not have a curriculum committee at this time.
Chris?
Having been a teacher like Kurt, and when I thought about running for the school board, I thought about what committee I could be helpful on. And I did think about a curriculum committee. In fact, the first meeting I ever had with Casey as a teacher, I had prepared a presentation on why Eureka Math was a terrible choice for us to be using in middle school. Apparently, my presentation wasn't very effective because we continued to use it for two or three more years down the road. But my thinking has, has changed over time. Because I think most people who run for a school board are citizens of their community who just want to help out. Doesn't mean they have a background in education or anything like that. But I think there could, there could really, we could really get ourselves in a lot of trouble. I agree with Kurt that some people might choose to use the curriculum committee to promote their own personal or political agenda, which I think is very dangerous. I think in order to set curriculum, people really have to have an understanding of what's involved. And if you feel strongly that a child needs to learn topic Y or a skill Y, first of all, they might not be aware that they have to have an understanding of topic X first. So I think those decisions need to be left up to the professionals that we already have, like Casey and this team of coaches that he's working with currently. And I also, I don't really understand why we would need a curriculum committee if there are state standards that are already established and our teachers have to teach towards those standards. Wouldn't that just be a duplication of effort? I did have a question for you, Kurt, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
You, you used the term woke. I have often heard the term used woke. But I have to say that when I hear that, it's often used in what I would refer to as a, a mean-spirited comment. And in a belittling way. So just so I can understand what you're saying, could you please define that term, woke?
Well, I just think that there are education programs, teacher education programs, who influence professionals, education professionals, that hold views that are out of the mainstream of what I think our parents and, and community members support. Now, now you're looking at it as, the committee as a vehicle for somebody to press their agenda. I'm looking at it as a check against somebody else's agenda. We, but you know what, when, and I remember, every board that I remember had a certain number of professionals or retired professionals. It wasn't just a lay board. I think we're more lay when it comes to finance, well, and, and buildings and grounds. But we worked, when I was at the high school, there was a, there was a, a board member who had kind of an agenda. He wanted to see more history and civics, and we'd been teaching more social stuff. And, but we worked with him. And we came up with a, a proposal that he could support. We chose the materials. And, and the board, of course, they approved what, what we came up with, with the committee. And I just, I thought it was a very positive process.
I still don't understand your definition of woke.
It's just, it, it's, I guess it's the opposite of what you said was somebody's agenda. I mean, you, you'll find liberal agendas, you'll find conservative agendas, and you'll find agendas that you can't really put a label on. And I'm just thinking it's-
Woke is a label.
What's that?
I think woke is a label.
Well, pardon me for making that way. I apologize.
Thank you.
Patty?
I just, I appreciate what you said, Kurt, about looking at any kind of an agenda for gaps and redundancies. That is actually the job of, of our administration to do just that. And I would assume that they've been doing it all along. If there's a concern with that, I definitely think that we should bring it up. Because I know that most districts I've worked at, it, it's, it's a computer, you know, but we, we put information into computers to determine where our gaps and redundancies might be to ensure that any kind of, you know, particularly high-stakes testing type things, you know, are being appropriately taught so that obviously our children have the fairest chance to do well. So I, I, I would reach out, make sure that that is happening. Because it would be my expectation as board member that it's internally happening.
I've, I've asked about gaps and redundancies and not really gotten much of a response.
Any other questions, comments, discussion points? Christine, go ahead.
You're muted.
I am one of the people on the board that's a layperson as far as education matters go. But I really do not think that we should have this kind of a curriculum or personnel committee. I think that's up to the administration of the school district and not up to laypersons to do.
All right, Kurt, Peter, go ahead.
Well, as a school board, if we've got questions about the curriculum, we can ask anyways at a school board meeting. We can have it put on the agenda and we can discuss it if we need to. Am I correct?
Yeah.
You know, I, I attended virtually a meeting a couple of years ago. And Casey was telling the board about some minor changes to the program of studies. And somebody said, do you want us to vote on that? So I know somebody was thinking along the lines of, you know, the board approves the curriculum. And Casey said, no, I'm just, just letting you know. And it just, just kind of took me by surprise when I, you know, was attending that board virtual, uh, board meeting virtually.
So all, just, just to understand kind of our flow of our year. We get, we are, we get curriculum kind of reports twice a year? Is that kind of how it flows, like daily?
In terms of the strategic plan or?
So that's what I'm asking, right?
Yes, we do it three times a year.
Three times a year.
As, as to the progress. But like, for example, there may be other times of the year. Like I was going to suggest in agenda building tonight that on October sixteenth, we look at some of our annual snapshot data and some of the survey data from the guidance department on our graduating seniors and talk about some of our literacy scores from our star assessment results last year. So if that's something you want on the agenda for next meeting, that's something that we'll talk about, talk about then. And as part of that conversation, you're going to hear about some of the curriculum that supports curriculum or programs. Because curriculum and program is two different things.
Right.
Some of those things that support, you know, our scores or where we have work to do, right? Like, so, so I think there's many opportunities. You formally, we formally report out on the policy in August. And then you have the strategic plan three times a year. And then Casey gives a curriculum report once a month as part of his central office report. Tells you what we're working on. And then also, you know, there's times where we're talking about the testing data and scores. But if there's something specifically you want to hear about, then that's something that you can put on the agenda to hear about.
Okay. Because in, in thinking about it, there's a couple of things. Number one, I was looking at the policy that the curriculum and development coordination policy. And it's obviously not been updated to reflect our current situation. Because it says sending, curriculum plans will be coordinated between sending and receiving schools within the district. There's one about like member, member school district boards, like it's from the old kind of setup. So obviously, that needs to be looked at at our next policy meeting. We can update the language in that to reflect what it should say. And then, secondly then, you know, in looking at the education quality standards, where it talks about, as outlined in the education quality, each supervisory union board shall ensure that the written and delivered curriculum within their supervisory union is aligned with the standards approved by the State Board of Education. That's all, that's the only place that I saw that it said board. The rest is each school shall enable students to engage annually in regular, relevant, comprehensive learning opportunities, which we have all over our stuff. So ensure that the written and delivered curriculum within their supervisory union is aligned with the standards approved by the State Board of Education. So that means we would have to know the standards, right? And then we'd have to know Mixed Up Files of Mrs. Basilie Frankweiler is read in the fourth grade because my name's in it, Castle Village School. You're really right. Anyways, and it aligns with the standard of this kind of literature that does these kinds of things, right? Is that kind of basically what it's saying?
Yeah, and, and through Policy D-one, the proficiency-based graduation requirements, you delegate that responsibility to me to ensure that that's occurring.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. So would it ever be something, and you can say no because it's too much, where every, you know, once in a while, we have a, a grade level? Or a, let's say, like, I know, do they still have like chairs of social studies, chairs of, that they kind of report, hey, these are the kinds of things that we're using, these are the kind of materials that we're using? So that might be something that as a board would help educate us about what's actually happening without forming a committee, kind of getting in the, you know, having that kind of temptation to get into the weeds. But just give us an idea of what's happening. Just a thought.
I think that's a great idea.
I, I like that.
I, I don't have any interest in seeing a fourteen-page strategic plan with, you know, rubric and matrix and all this data and what does it mean and policy this and policy that. My concern, I think maybe Kurt's, is I just want to know what's being taught in class. And I guess to your point, you know, if there's a department head who just kind of gives us a general overview of what the kids are learning these days, that would be probably the best information that I would want to take from it.
And it can kind of, you know, do your pre, your pre-K, your three through eight, your eight through whatever. It doesn't have to be every grade give us something, but just an idea of like, these are the books still being used? Or, hey, these are for sale now because there are no longer reading, the Mixed Up Files and Mrs. Basilie Frankweiler, we'd like to sell them. Five cents each. So.
You know, Tim, sometimes I think, sometimes I think that's a strategy is to give us a fourteen-page whatever with, with, you know, to, to sort of make us glaze over and, and make us take your eye off the ball. I counted on the district website four hundred pages of proficiency-based pages of documentation. And I worked on a lot of it, actually, as a teacher. And, boy, it's just, and then I, I don't know whoever looks at it again.
I hear you. It's frustrating. We're public education, right? I mean, ninety-five percent of it is fed down from us from the top. And here at the local level, we get, we're five percent vested parties, right? We don't get to control anything anymore. So it's easy to feel like you're losing touch because we have so little control over curriculum and policy and everything else.
I know this is a little off topic, but I have to sort of object to the idea that the state told us to have a one through four grading system, told us not to count homework, told us not to have deadlines, told us to have unlimited retakes. State didn't tell us that stuff. Granted, it was a trend. They didn't tell us we had to do that stuff.
I will say with the homework thing, I remember, I remember meeting after meeting, I don't know if Tony or you, Annette, I was after meeting talking about the effects of homework. And, and granted, it was for younger students when I, when I remember talking about it, you know. The equity issues, who goes home and has support, who doesn't, who goes home and doesn't have any support. You know, parents don't get home till eight, nine at night, homework doesn't get done, comes back. We had conversations about that. I remember going through the whole thing of ten minutes of homework, twenty minutes of homework, thirty per grade level. Like, what's the best amount of homework, right? And I don't know if no homework has ever been an actual thing that's actually happened. I mean, I've seen my kids come home with homework. Whether they do it or not, it's a whole different issue. But it's definitely changed since, since the past. And, and I understand where you're coming from with, with all that. But I don't believe these decisions were made in isolation. They were discussions, lots of discussions and lots of, and I think as a school board, we listened to administrators. We listened to presentations. We listened to our administrators talk to us about it. And decisions were made based on that knowledge. So if we feel like we need to revisit it, I think that's another question.
So I was on the board here, Benson, way back when we had these homework discussions. And I got to push back about it being an equity issue because equity-
Well, I didn't want to argue it, Don. I was just given history.
But I'm just saying, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that. Because it, how is it equitable to take opportunity away from the kids who may have support at home?
I have a comment on the curriculum thing, if we could circle back to that.
You're still there? Go for it.
Oh, okay. Well, I just, I sense a veering.
Bring us back on track.
You speak up a little bit.
Sure, yeah. I, so I'd say my concern with the curriculum committee, even though I find it interesting, is that we might look at a paragraph of a textbook and say, we don't like this paragraph, and start micromanaging the teacher. Which, or like, even if they come and present to the board, we wouldn't have, that's not our place or our power.
the board, we wouldn't have, that's not our place or our power, like, correct? Like, I'm, I'm new to this, so you can say, "No, it is," but I would guess that it's not our place to say, "Oh, we don't want that chapter taught," like, correct? Right? Or, and that would be maybe an overstep, so that's sort of my concern.
Well, I, I think that some of us, maybe Chris, I don't know, are thinking about some of the things that are happening in Florida, in Virginia, and I don't think we're anywhere near that, I really don't. And I'm pretty conservative, but I'm not like that.
Okay.
All right, are there any other points or questions to this discussion? So I'm assuming to, to reform a committee as Kurt is requesting, it would just require the majority of the board to do that, and then to construct a policy?
Well, you would have to, you would have to state that from your intention, and then you would have to amend the bylaws, because the bylaws have the committee structure, and then you'd have to vote on the bylaws, so...
Well, I've, I've got a sense that I've not gained a consensus on this issue, so I would be of a mind to maybe revisit it in a year or two.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you bringing these concerns to the board and, and raising awareness, and it fostered a pretty good discussion, so thank you for doing that. All right, so we'll move on now to public comment round two, anyone here in person who has a public comment to bring in the end of the meeting? No? Virtually any public comments? Okay. Agenda building, again, we only have one meeting next month, it is on, um...
16.
Monday, October 16th, and what should we look forward to at that meeting?
Well, um, we'll have an update for the finance committee, um, because the finance committee, I'll talk about some preliminary, um, very preliminary numbers and process. Um, the high school, school counseling department, um, I would love for them to come and present, um, the data on the graduating seniors and have a discussion, um, about that, um, as well as what we see, um, our new senior class doing this year, or, and what they're involved in. Also, um, Casey and Walt are going to talk a little bit about the annual snapshot, if that's, if that's agreeable to you all, um, it's based on FY '22, but I still think it's good to know what was publicly put out there. If for some reason our cognia scores are not embargoed, we could talk about those, but I would expect they're still embargoed at that time. And then our STAR literacy data, um, from last year, we made some significant growth, um, at the elementary level, and I think it's something, um, really worth, worth looking at, um, and digging into a little bit. So those are some, those are some things, I mean, maybe have a school nurse contract with any, with any luck, um, I don't know if there's anything else folks want.
Any other agenda items to consider for next meeting?
I, Tim, I don't, I mean, this would be too much by the next meeting, but I like the idea of what the guidance department is going to do at our next meeting with the survey of last year's grads. I think it would be interesting if at some point they could look back and see what our grads from five years ago and even 10 years ago are now doing, and what parts of their education Fair Haven got them there, and what they think would have gotten them further or been more beneficial to them. And, and that, that, that may be a big ask, um, and it may be something that's impossible, but, um...
We've tried in the past, it's been really hard to track them down and to participate in anything like that, but, um, we could certainly try, I mean, maybe even if there's a handful of individuals that would want to, you know, talk to us.
I mean, do your classes have reunions?
Some do.
Some do?
I have a four-year next year.
Well, well, Peter, you can survey the class then.
Yeah. I think I'll remember how.
I mean, and, and that's the thing, is that some school, some high schools even have kind of a strong alumni association, and, and others don't.
You wanted to know what, you know, alumni from the last 50 years was doing.
I mean, so, and just speaking from past experiences in graduating from Otter Valley, when they all of a sudden, and that's a school that's different because it sits on, that's, that school sits on 400 acres, school, and they all of a sudden wanted to upgrade their fields, they had their version of probably, like Tom Blackburn, sent out a letter to all of the alumni, and they put in new fields, a new football stadium, no taxpayer money. So at some point, as budgets get tighter and everything, that might be something to consider, is just, even if you're just thinking, this year we're going to start some kind of a, an alumni association, so that down the road, we can have stuff like that that comes back, instead of relying on the taxpayers to do it, you know, you set up, whether it's a 503C or whatever that people can make donations to, that go to infrastructure things like a ball field or whatever, um, so that then the money that would have gone there out of the taxpayer money can go toward educational purposes. But that's not something that we're going to solve this year, but it's something I think to start looking at. And if we could find out what our students are doing that have graduated, I think that would be a big start.
Any other agenda items? All right, so we do have an executive session, legal matter, who's invited? All the principals are invited.
No, the prin, the principals can go, um...
Central office, administration, and...
All right, looking for a motion?
So moved, second.
All those in favor, executive session, legal with admin remaining, please say aye.
Aye.